Call the meeting to order and take roll call.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
And Mr. Sneed?
Here.
All right, we have six. We have a status sheet. From March twenty eighth to June twenty seventh, we need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second motion?
Discussion. Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Um, we have no committee reports. So we'll go to the first new business item.
Mr. Hilsinger, did you do the minutes? The minutes were before the status sheet.
Oh, no, we did not. Let's do those now. Can we get a motion for the?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Now we'll go to new business.
Thank you.
PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-two, R ladies in.
Good evening, PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-two, R ladies in is a request for a change in zoning from R two to R five with a PEU for a seven point three seven acre tract on the north side of Big Bend Road at the corner of Longstone Lane. As you recall from public hearing, this site is in sort of Midwest County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this larger aerial, you can see some of the surrounding, um, single-family residential development. Here's the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. It shows a seventeen thousand square foot building accessed via a new curb cut from Big Bend Road. The new curb cut is to the east of the current entrance, which will be closed. Thirty-five parking spaces are shown at the site. Um, and their landscaping plan indicates plans to retain the existing plant mass around the perimeter of the site and adds new landscaping around the parking lot. Additionally, two stormwater base sins are shown at the site. The petitioner also showed a preliminary floor plan at public hearing. It shows fourteen bedrooms highlighted here in blue, ten program offices highlighted in red, and twelve administrative offices highlighted in green. The floor plan also shows a community room, dining area, classroom, and various storage areas. The department was concerned about the number of administrative offices shown on the floor plan as no office use not directly tied to the daily operations of the facility are permitted. Subsequent to public hearing and conversations with the department, the petitioner submitted a revised site development plan showing twenty-eight parking spaces, um, providing a breakdown of three ADA accessible spaces, eight for residents, four for professional resources and visitors, and thirteen spaces for staff. Um, the revised preliminary floor plans show only five offices on the west wing. Um, and the petitioner also provided more information about the program offices, um, as listed here, um, on the screen. The department recommends the petitioner retain the existing tree mass, but remove any dead, unhealthy, or invasive species, including honeysuckle. The department recommends adding trees along the driveway to enhance the residential feel of the site. Um, and the department also recommends the recommends residential style lighting with sixteen-foot light standards and Ballard-style light poles. One issue brought up at public hearing was potential stormwater and sanitary issues at the site. Subsequent to public hearing, the petitioner provided additional information about the stormwater and sanitary capacity at the site from MSD. MSD indicated, uh, that the typical stormwater requirements, um, would need to be met at the site, and those requirements are are laid out here for you. Um, additionally regarding the sanitary issues, which seem to be, uh, the issue of greater concern, um, they noted that the pump station capacity may need to be increased to accommodate the development, um, that storage upgrades may be required. And they also noted that sanitary studies and upgrades typically occur during the site development plan review process. And thus, the department recommends that the petitioner would be required to submit a written report explaining the sanitary sewer upgrades, um, that would be submitted prior to site development plan approval. And the department also notes that updates may be done in tandem with other MSD improvements, and the developer would be responsible for partnering with MSD regarding funding the upgrades. The department is recommending approval of this request. As a standalone request, R five residence district zoning would be inappropriate at the site. However, the planned environment unit procedure encumbers the site and will not allow any other R five residence district uses to be developed. The department finds that the PEU procedure is the appropriate mechanism for developing the proposed use. The proposed group living facility is a residential use and belongs in a residence district. And the department notes that no office would be office use not directly tied to the daily operations of the facility will be permitted at the site. And so the department recommends, um, approval with the following specific conditions of development. The existing plant mass shall be maintained, residential style lighting shall be used, architectural elevations showing the structure is equally treated on all sides shall be submitted, and a written report explaining sanitary sewer upgrades shall be submitted prior to site development plan approval. So at this time, I'd like to request a motion for approval.
Okay, with that, uh, we need a motion of some kind? Anyone?
I'll make a mo- motion for approval, but I have a question after a good a second here.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got it on the floor. Uh, Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, and I know this doesn't happen till later, but is that Valley Park Fire Department there, Fire District?
I believe it is in the, in the Valley Park, uh, Fire District, but we can double check that real quick.
Now, my concern was only do they have enough ample? Is the road wide enough to get a truck up there and a hook? Do they have a ladder truck long enough to get back in that that T section of that building?
So, excuse me, if this project does go through site development plan review, the Fire District does review, um, their hydrant locations and the access. Um, so the plan wouldn't be able to be approved if it didn't work for the Fire District.
And at that time, if if they needed more road, do they have enough, do they have enough area to put a rope around the side of that building?
Right, if they had to do that, they'd they'd likely, they'd either have to facilitate that under the conditions as proposed, you know, by the commission, or if they needed some sort of tweak and setbacks, they could come back to the commission to ask for an adjustment. But, um, they would have to meet all of the Fire District's requirements before their site plan could be improved, including, um, the drive around the building if that's needed, just like you're mentioning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I I just have, I just want to clarify one thing. It's currently, Mel, or or I'm sorry, um, it's currently in what zone right zoning right now?
This site is currently zoned R two.
It is R two?
Yes.
And and why do they want to go to R five?
Um. Because.
It's R two. We can allow them to build it on R two as well as we.
So, the the use of group living facility is not a permitted or conditional use until you get up to the R five. So in the R two, there are some other group living uses that are permitted, but not a group living facility for, in this case, this one is for charitable purposes. So the the ones that are permitted are like group homes for the handicap, group homes for, um, religious orders. But it's not until the R five that this use is an option.
So, so by doing this, uh, let's say down the road, uh, for whatever reason they outgrow it, they have to move. Uh, it remains R five. They just don't have, uh, the next, the next, uh, petitioner for that property would have to apply for something else. But but it would remain zoned R five, is that correct?
So if this proposal went through, it would be zoned R five, but it would also be encumbered by the PEU procedure. So say this use was developed as the petitioner proposed and and existed for fifteen years. If they wanted to leave the site, the site could only be utilized for a different group living facility that meets those conditions. If they wanted to do any other, any other use, they'd have to go back to public hearing.
Okay. And it sounds like they've a- addressed the issue of the, uh, deficient pump station, and the developer would be, uh, responsible for working out the cost of that with MSD is, uh, I think that's what she said.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a, uh, a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero, and we'll go on to PC thirteen dash twenty-one, South County Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram.
Mr. Hilsinger, I just want to let everyone know that Mr. Lawler has joined. He's in the meeting now.
Okay, uh, excuse me, my 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 says, uh, screen says thanks for using Cisco. I can still have, uh, I I guess I need to sign off, sign back in, is that right, Mel?
Not sure, you might be able to just leave it since we can still hear and see you. If you just minim- excuse me, is it something you can minimize?
Hold on.
He's gone.
We can still see you, Mr. Sneed.
You're you're great, you're great. I, yep, that that worked.
Okay.
All right, good evening. PC thirteen dash twenty-one, South County Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram is requesting a C three to a C eight for zero point six nine acres located to the southeast side of Lee May Ferry Road, approximately four hundred forty feet southwest of Victory Drive. This location is in South County, and it's highlighted in an outline of red for you. And here it is in a larger image. Again, the property is outlined in red. So at public hearing, the petitioners noted, um, four detail bays that are already existing, two automatic car washes that are already existing with two stacking lanes, and two curb cuts off of Lee May Ferry Road. They're proposing a photo booth area to the north of this property, which is why it's going into a C eight. So, um, staff recommends a decorative site-proof fence along the eastern property line. Um, and in their comments, MoDOT recommended closing one of the two curb cuts off of Lee May Ferry Road. Staff would recommend closing the southern curb cut, but it's up to the petitioner as to what they would like to do with that. Um, if they were to close the southern curb cut, we would like to see the southwest landscape buffer yard be extended and additional landscape, not only throughout the site, but specifically towards the southwest portion. The department recommends approval as commercial zoning remains appropriate along Lee May Ferry Road, and the site currently operates as a car wash. The additional use of private photography studio for vehicles is compatible with commercial uses along Lee May Ferry Road, a highly commercialized arterial development with many auto-oriented uses. So at this time, I would ask for a motion of approval.
Okay, thank you. Um, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Back into motion.
Keith, okay, discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go on to, uh, PC nineteen dash twenty-two, Bromall Inc. Pedal Wave Car Wash.
So Wayne, so the, at one point, we had published the agenda, and we thought we were going to be bringing that info report, but we are not, we actually don't have that info report on the agenda anymore.
We will skip that then, and we'll go on to PC Old Business, PC oh eight dash twenty-two and oh nine dash twenty-two, Quick Trip Corporation.
Uh, good evening, commissioners, uh, before you is PC oh eight and oh nine dash twenty-two, uh, Quick Trip Corporation, um, which is a request for a change of zoning from R two and C two to C two with a CUP for a two point five acre tract located on the northwest quadrant of Butler Hill Road and Lee May Ferry Road. As you can see from the county contacts map, this parcel is located in, uh, South St. Louis County, just to the east of Interstate fifty-five, and the parcel is outlined in red, um, on the aerial. And this aerial provides, uh, some further context of the surrounding land uses. Uh, the east side of Lee May Ferry Road is, uh, primarily developed with, uh, residential. And and then on the west side of Lee May Ferry Road, south of Butler Hill is is primarily commercial. Uh, there's some commercial, uh, north of Butler Hill, but there is also some multifamily residential, uh, to the north and west. Uh, the preliminary site development plan as shown at public hearing indicated access from both Butler Hill and Lee May Ferry. Um, the access from Butler Hill would be full ingress and egress, whereas the access from Lee May Ferry, uh, would be a write-in only, uh, with full egress. Uh, the petitioner, uh, commissioned a, uh, traffic study um, prior to applying, not and was not as a condition of applying for the, uh, the change in zoning. Um, and that report indicated that the traffic demand generated by this use would require the addition of a right turn lane from Lee May Ferry to Butler Hill. And the petitioner has stated that they would, um, fund that, uh, expenditure at their own cost. And additionally, there's a pedestrian path shown from Butler Hill, um, it's kind of outlined in the, by the red box, um, but there is not a corresponding pedestrian path from Lee May Ferry. Uh, the required parking for the convenience store use would be twenty-one spaces. They are providing fifty-four spaces. And I did want to bring your attention to a large retaining wall with fencing, um, along the the west and north, um, around the, uh, fuel pump area. Some recommended revisions to the site plan include adding a pedestrian path from Lee May Ferry Road to an entrance, uh, of the convenience store, um, similar to what they proposed from Butler Hill Road. Um, additionally, parking in excess of one hundred and twenty percent of the maximum required parking, um, is required to be located on previous pavement. Um, I would, uh, note that the two signs that they're proposing, one at one at each entrance, um, are too tall to be considered a monument sign, so staff recommends monument-style signage only, uh, which would limit the the sign height to eight feet rather than the fifteen feet that they're showing, and additionally, limiting the light standards to sixteen feet in height. Uh, the preliminary landscape plan the petitioner submitted, um, and presented at public hearing, um, shows a landscape buffer yard along the northern property line a- as well as both rights of way. Um, and then there is minimal interior parking lot landscaping proposed. Uh, recommended provisions to the landscape plan include increasing the width of the southern landscape islands at the terminus of the parking rows, both east and west of the convenience store, um, as well as adding parking islands to the northern terminus of parking rows, uh, both east and west of the convenience store. Additionally, the northern buffer yard is required, um, to have two trees and four shrubs, um, per twenty linear feet, and then additionally requiring Missouri native plantings. Uh, so this evening, we are recommending a modified approval. Uh, we're recommending for PC oh eight dash twenty-two, approval of C eight plant commercial district in lieu of the C two. Um, and then along with that, oh nine dash twenty-two, we are recommending a denial of the conditional use permit. Uh, the proposed use is appropriate at this site when it's located in a C eight district. Um, the purpose of which of of a C eight district is, uh, for the establishment of developments and uses in locations that are appropriate under an approved site plan and specific conditions of development, as so long as those a- approved plans and conditions are consistent with good planning practice uh, and compatible with the permitted developments and uses in the adjoining districts. And so along those those lines, the C eight procedure allows the county to to exercise maximum control over the development to ensure that it is consistent with good planning prac- practice and compatible with the permitted developments and uses in adjoining districts. Uh, we're recommending requiring enhanced landscaping, uh, as previously described, limiting the height of light standards to sixteen feet, uh, which matches the residential, uh, maximum height for a light standard, uh, requiring a commemorative architectural feature from the existing Casbon building to be located on the site, uh, providing equal pedestrian access from both rights of way, uh, and requiring architectural review um, to include thirty-five percent finestration, brick or stone cladding, and the equal treatment of all facades. As you'll recall, at the, uh, a previous executive meeting in April, uh, the petitioner requested, um, this petition to be held, um, which it was, they submitted a letter, uh, dated May eighteenth, um, raising three objections to the recommendations of the staff information report and the conditions and attachment C. Um, specifically, they object to the recommendation of C eight in lieu of C two with the CUP. Um, they request removal of the requirement for two electric vehicle charging stations, and they request a waiver of the requirement for previous pavement for parking areas in excess of one hundred and twenty percent of the required parking. So in response to the petition's letter and as outlined in the cover memo that was sent to you, uh, St. Louis County, uh, drives its planning and zoning authority from its Home Rule Charter, not from chapter sixty-four of the Ride Statutes of State Missouri as, uh, implied by the, uh, petitioner's letter. Additionally, section one zero zero three point three zero zero point one zero of the St. Louis County Revised Ordinances grants the Planning Commission the authority to recommend a zoning district other than what was requested. Um, we are removing the requirement for, uh, the electric, electric vehicle charging stations, and the department finds that no demonstrable reason was given, uh, to waive the requirement of the zoning ordinance for previous pavement, uh, to be located on excess parking. I would note that the previous pavement would be, um, as approved on the site plan in locations that, uh, don't have potential, you know, hazards from fuel spills, so it wouldn't be located, uh, where fuel is dispensed or where fuel is stored. Um, it would be a regular parking space, uh, for the convenience store. So at this time, I would ask for a motion for, um, modified approval, um, approving for PC oh eight dash twenty-two, approval of C eight in lieu of C two, and then subsequently denying the, uh, request for a conditional use permit in PC oh nine dash twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, do we have a motion?
Now, this is Bill, Bill State. I'll make a motion for approval with conditions. And I can get into a couple of the conditions if we get a second.
Okay. Do we have a second to get it on the floor?
I'll second it, Wayne.
Okay, thanks, Bill. All right, Bill, you want to go ahead?
Sure, uh, first of all, I I think the, uh, staff's report was very comprehensive and and it was certainly helpful. Uh, and and I would agree that C eight is the appropriate one, uh, that 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 they're also recommending. Uh, there are, uh, uh, E chargers, or or I I would certainly agree with that. I I am still having some reservation about the previous, uh, pavement. Uh, I think that the report and responses from the petitioner has some credibility. Uh, I think they, correct me if I'm, uh, uh, wrong on this, but having read it, it seems as though they plan to have more, um, it's non-parking area, and they plan to have more plantings and and that type of thing. Is there, uh, uh, is that not at least a partial reason to waive that requirement and have them do, uh, uh, construct a more, uh, planted areas instead?
If that, absolutely. So if the commission would would prefer that the that that be struck out and or to put a, to permit, um, you know, uh, completely paved area, um, without previous pavement, it's absolutely within your, uh, purview to do so, and your rationale can be, um, the addition of of additional plantings, uh, you know, slightly off-site. So yes, that's absolutely within your purview to to do so.
Yeah, okay, uh, yeah, because I I wouldn't want to change something that would, uh, affect the control of water or 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 dumping, uh, water that's not controlled. So, uh, we we really have to rely on you all to do that. I think it was an excellent job of, uh, of explaining it in the reports. So I guess I would, uh, like to, if I can, uh, get a motion to change, uh, the recommendation.
And change your motion to include that?
To include that.
Bill Ballard will go from there.
Okay. So I'll make a motion with that condition.
Okay, Bill?
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Anyone else have anything to add? The only thing I need to note of is on the C eight, this commission throughout the years has always preferred and will always go for a C eight over any of the other commercial classifications. And that's solely that we have
Right.
a a measure of what's going on and what's going to be done that we don't get with the other classifications, so. Just so they have the record straight on that.
Sure.
Anyone else?
No, I think I got, that's okay.
Okay, um, seeing no one else, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. No old business, uh, so we'll go to correspondence. First item is PC thirty-six dash twenty-one, Moto Inc.
As you recall, um, PC thirty-six dash twenty-one Moto Inc. is a request for a change in zoning from M one to F P M one and F P M three to M three and F P M three for a two point nine four acre tract on the southeast quadrant of I two fifty-five and Coke Road. Um, this is a response to a council order from April twenty-sixth referring the petition back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. As you recall, this site is in South County. Um, the petition timeline is here for your reference. It was, uh, most, it was held at your meeting on May twenty-third. Uh, the department has prepared a response to the council order reiterating approval um, based on the conditions outlined in your letter of recommendation, which are also, uh, listed here. Oh, so at this time, I'd like to request a motion. I apologize.
Okay. Um. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval as as recommended.
And I'll second it, but have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, Mr. Ballard, uh, brought up, uh, 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 issue that I think is germane and and should also be included in the letter. Uh, and that is that there is a precedent, uh, on our northern border of the city. Uh, I drove out there, and it's on two seventy and Riverview. It's almost an identical situation, so, uh, we, uh, as the county have set a precedent to allow a filling station at the, uh, entrance point into the county from Illinois. And that was, I think, one of the, one of the objections that was, uh, to deny it. And and I just think that the letter should, uh, And and I just think that the letter should indicate that we've done it before as as an organization.
We can add that in.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add?
I'd like to thank Mr. Sneed for that. There's really two service stations up there that we did years ago. So the president's been set twice.
I would just make note on the reduced crime at the site. This is the only site in all the years that I've been here that I was told by a petitioner not to go on the site because it wasn't safe. And that was due to an encampment at the at the base of this site. I so I I think it's further reason to see some kind of development at this location. And nothing's happened there for at least two decades. So with that, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. And we'll go on to PC eighty-four dash oh one K M Properties.
So this is PC eighty-four oh one K M Properties, which is a three acre C eight district on the west side of Telegraph Road, approximately three hundred feet north of Herb Road. They were requesting amendments to the C eight ordinance. This site is located in South County. It's in the Oakville area on the west side of Telegraph across from the National Church residences and the Order of Saint Clair nun's home. So this C eight ordinance, as written, most recently amended by this commission in two thousand and seven, I think, currently limits the number of restaurants over fifteen hundred square feet to one. The reasoning is that restaurants smaller than that have a parking calculation that is based on square footage. Restaurants over fifteen hundred square feet have a parking calculates calculation based on the number of seats and the number of employees. So in two thousand and seven, the petitioner was asking for a parking reduction and in return was offering to limit themselves to the number of sit-down larger restaurants. So today they do want to have more restaurants. So their request is to remove to to up that limit on the on the number of restaurants from one restaurant over fifteen hundred square feet to three. And then they are also asking for an increased parking reduction. Right now they have a fifteen percent parking reduction and they're asking for a seventeen percent parking reduction. So if you look at this parking table, it shows that the development has one hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces. And based on their proposed mix of tenants, they need one hundred and fifty. This leaves them about seventeen percent short. That's why they're requesting seventeen percent. In our analysis, the department noticed that since this ordinance was last amended, the overall zoning ordinance was amended for the parking requirements to come down. So the parking for retail uses and restaurants in this development is actually less than what it was in two thousand and seven. So the the petitioner did ask for that limit on the number of restaurants to be increased. But what the department finds is that the limit isn't really necessary. We think that the mix of uses works with the amount of parking that's shown. We also find that there are empty spaces. When we look at the aerial photography and the Google Street View, there are extra spaces in this development at different times of day. But we do find that it would be appropriate to grant a twenty percent parking reduction to this C eight, which is the maximum parking reduction you can grant a C eight that's less than five hundred thousand square feet in size. We find that this would allow the petitioner greater flexibility in in, you know, leasing out the development and that the provided parking does work for this proposed mix of tenants. So we are recommending a modified approval of their request, but it does meet the meet the intentions of the petitioner. So this would remove the restriction on the number of restaurants and up the parking reduction from fifteen percent to twenty percent. And with that, I would ask for a motion of approval.
Okay. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, but I have a question.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Keith?
Questions for for you, Wayne and and Bill, because I, you know, I used to live down there and go to a couple of the restaurants in there, and now there's more restaurants. Are they completely packed on a Friday night where it's overflowed?
Can I answer that?
Go ahead, Bill.
I would hope so.
That that development is overparked every day. Not during the day. If you fly over it while people are working, it's not. But the the traffic in there overflows into Walgreens parking lot. They park in the aisles. They park along the storefronts for the in the fire lanes. I just don't understand how we can support that with the information that we're given.
But I'll resend my motion.
Okay. Does the second one rescind theirs? Gary, I think it was you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So would the like, would the commission like to have a modified recommendation or would you like to just not or or just say that that you find that the site is, in fact, does have parking issues with its current mix and as such you make no, you you recommend no change to the to the governing ordinance?
Yeah, you know, I think they've got, what, four restaurants in there now?
So the they would have, there are several restaurants, but many of them are smaller than fifteen hundred square feet. The Chinese restaurant, a couple of them are smaller. But they, Abby, could you go back to the slide with the table on it? I think there are. Yeah, so the Los Fuentes is a large restaurant.
The big one's the Mexican restaurant.
Yeah, Los Fuentes is one of the large existing restaurants. The new restaurant they want to add is this Nubbies barbecue restaurant.
That's already in there.
That's in there. That's
So there there actually
Problem.
Right, there actually is some, the timeline of occupancy issuance was off with this proposal. So part of this request is to rectify, I think specifically the Nubbies occupancy that exists.
How did they get permission to even go in there with the sized restaurant? That that they it wasn't a restaurant before. It was a wine shop and a small bar.
Right. So there was some difficulty in interpreting this ordinance on the county's end.
Code enforcement had some code enforcement in the Department of Transportation Public Works issued an occupancy permit. Is that correct, Mel?
Correct.
Well, I I I I just think we're driving people to cross a five-lane road to get to the parking of the development across the street.
The other Tory pines.
Or or to park in their neighbor's yard at Walgreens. Or park in, I mean, it it's terrible. It it really is. I hear about it all the time. I said, what can I do about it? I didn't even know it is going to put something in there.
So I think that what I'm hearing from the commission is that, and correct me if I am, if I am putting words into your mouths, you would like your response to actually say that the commission finds that there are rationales for not amending this ordinance and you find no, you do not find a reason to amend this ordinance based on that the site currently as it operates in the evenings is actually is underparked. It does not have enough parking for the for the number of uses.
Bill's right on that.
If that, and so what we would do as staff is that we would redraft this to match your conversation from today, and we would bring it back to you in two weeks to ensure that it says what you wanted to say. Which from what I'm hearing is that the commission's recommendation is not to amend this ordinance that you find that it is currently underparked. It does not have enough parking for the uses and that you find no rational reason or no, there's no reason at this point to amend the ordinance.
What what do they do with Nubbies then?
That will be a question.
Would probably have to look into that. And we would get an answer before the the next executive meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, then we want to hold on this?
Yeah, you can do, you can, you can request a hold and we'll bring you, we'll bring you a new communication
Yes.
that reflects this conversation.
All right, great.
I have a question. If this is for the caterer, how many parking spaces does a caterer need?
So, and and this did come up when I talked about this with the zoning enforcement officer, but I'm not sure that they would propose just the catering operation. I think it goes hand in hand with the restaurant use.
They have a full bar in there.
On the catering side or just in the restaurant?
And on the other side, it's all tables. So it's a restaurant. It's a full restaurant. They may use, be using the name catering, but I wouldn't classify what you see in there as catering. Because they've got two entries on here.
They've got thirty-six hundred square feet.
Right, they 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 took Nubbies as in two ten, what was formerly two tenant spaces. I think that's why it's shown as two lines.
Yeah, the the left side was a wine shop. And then the right was a a bar and and they did do food.
But it was under fifteen hundred square feet. Yes.
Yeah, real small. But Nubbies has taken over the whole thing as food.
What I would note is that in two thousand and seven, when this ordinance was amended, this Rich's Custard did already exist and it is over fifteen hundred square feet. So I think it was sort of just missed during the last ordinance amendment, but it essentially is legally non-conforming. It doesn't meet the text of this ordinance through this ordinance. Los Fuentes is the only restaurant permitted. But I think the Rich's Custard, because it's on its its own parcel, it also technically doesn't comply with this. But that's just a, that's just extra information.
And I don't think Rich's has any inside seating any longer. Strictly walk.
Primarily drive-through or they they do sit out on some little tables outside, but it it's minimal.
They're showing it has thirty-two seats inside, but that doesn't mean people
I think with the pandemic, they shut it off.
Okay. But like Jacob said, we'll get more information. We'll we'll rewrite this to align with with what you guys have told us today and bring it back at the at the next July meeting.
Do we have a motion to hold?
I'll make a motion to hold.
Second.
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 Yeah. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. And then we'll go to PC twenty-nine dash seventeen seventeen Serenity Hills LLC.
So this, this is a resolution we had drafted that would have gone sort of hand in hand with the petition that has now been withdrawn from tonight's public hearing. Because that P E U by that Hillsborough development had expired, the commission would have had to pass this resolution to have the public hearing to consider reverting the zoning. But since that petition's been withdrawn withdrawn, the commission does not have to adopt this resolution.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action at all?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And with that, we'll go on to one site plan, PC thirty dash twenty-one N V S Properties eleven LLC.
Yeah, before you is PC thirty dash twenty-one N V S Properties eleven LLC. As you recall, recall, it was a a request for a C eight to permit a Montessori childcare center. Uh, this is the site plan. And there's a fence both along the west property line and atop the retaining wall that surrounds the the playground area as required by the the site specific ordinance. Access is from Arbor Spring Drive. And then there's a monument sign just outside the detention basin near the the entrance. And additionally, there there's parking along the front of the building. That's that's okay. Go ahead, Abby. As the the lighting plan, and as you recall, there was a requirement in the the site specific ordinance not to permit any light standards west of, you know, behind the the western edge of the building. And all the the blue is a foot candle note showing that there is no light being cast in that area. All light standards are are within the parking lot or on the building itself. And then those images are just examples of the the type of light standards they proposed to use. Uh, this is the landscaping plan. And there's extensive landscaping along the western property line and as well as on the 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 south and north. And there's some landscaping and along the right of way of Sulphur Springs. There was some site distance concerns that there were some of the landscaping there. These are the elevations, east and west. So east would be facing Sulphur Springs. And looking at the entrance of the building, west is the rear of the site. Looking towards, I guess, this would be the view if you're in the residential development to to the west. And then this would be the the south elevation. And the north elevation, as you can see, all sides are treated equally. And the next slide has some details on the materials to be used, the the types of shingles and decorative stone, as well as the the colors of the paint for the the siding. And then this has several details of the the dumpster elevations. You can see the the cement enclosure with the the cedar shingle doors. And the fences that are being proposed, these, I would point out the the smaller fence and is interior to the playground area. It demarcates the different playground areas for different age groups. And then there is a example of the proposed monument sign. Uh, so I would ask for a motion of approval of both the site plan and the architecture elevations at this time.
I'd like to make a motion for the site plan and the elevation. I second it.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favoring?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. Last item for the good of the order, anything, Jacob?
I I don't have anything for y'all this evening, so let's spend the next twelve minutes before public hearing relaxing.
Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Keith, get to your crackers.
Eyes have it seven zero and Keith, go eat a cracker.